Here.
Mrs. Pollan?
Here.
Dr. Thomas Farkason?
Here.
Mr. Zedanowicz?
Here.
Student Representative Kenya Ferreira?
Here.
And Isabella Gollum?
Here.
Everybody.
Thank you. I don't remember who did the lettuce with the pledge the last time. So it's Kenya, then. So Kenya, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do not have any revision to the agenda order. I don't believe we have any student participation, although we have a number of students in the room today. So we welcome you all. And for public communications, I do believe we have one person who has signed up. And that is, is it Kate Eichel? All right, Kate, as you make your way up, just a point of interest, the comments on topics of interest from the public. Board members do not respond to the comments. There's three minutes per individual, 21 minutes per subject matter in total. And at the one-minute mark, I always mess this up, two-minute mark, there's the yellow card. And then the red card is when you're out of time. So at that point, you should be wrapping up.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Kate Bedinga-Eichel, and I'm the co-founder and co-chair of the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee at Charter Oak International Academy. The Charter Oak EDI Committee was founded in 2018 to serve the diversity of families at Charter Oak. We also serve as a resource for families seeking to discuss and address school-related issues related to equity, diversity, and inclusion. We had one such issue recently after the announcement of a new West Hartford Public Schools visitor registration system. The notice of a change in policy, where parents and caregivers would now have to show ID to enter their children's schools, was sent through an email on Wednesday, October 23rd. We immediately heard from families that had concerns about this system, including how it was rolled out to families using an English-only email, the lack of information about how data would be collected and stored by the third-party provider, Raptor, lack of clarity about how family members with a criminal background unrelated to a school safety issue would be treated at the school, or how trans or gender non-conforming parents or family members whose identity may not match their public ID would be handled. We also were not aware of any key personnel or website where families could ask such questions and find answers. We all want our children to feel safe at school. However, this approach to personal safety and building security may undermine the school system's recent efforts to make families from all backgrounds feel welcome at their children's schools. We are in the process of scheduling a meeting to discuss these issues with administrators. Members of the school board should know how West Hartford Schools plans to consult members of the community before the adoption of new data and tracking systems. School safety systems need to adhere to principles that avoid targeting or profiling students or family members. Any personal data collection efforts by the school system should be evidence-based. In the case of the new visitor registration systems, we are concerned that the system may perpetuate myths about stranger danger to children, when in fact, children are more likely to be harmed or abused by an adult they know. Thank you for your attention to this important topic.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is unfinished business. And I don't believe we have any new business. And then that brings us to staff communications and reports. And in place of Mr. Moore, we have Dr. Morrow for the superintendent's report this evening.
All right, I will try and do it justice. Wanted to share that yesterday, all West Hartford teachers engaged in a full-day program at Conard, where they participated in 33 morning and afternoon sessions focused on the diversity and equity in our community programs and in our schools. Teachers and leaders agreed it was a fantastic opportunity for learning and made next-step commitments to continue this important work in our schools and with our families. I would like, on behalf of all of us, I think, to recognize Rosina Haskins for her vision and commitment in taking this from a simple idea to such an impactful experience. The feedback that we've received on this has been outstanding. And we are looking forward to continue to build on the discussions that we had yesterday as a staff at Conard. Also, as we discussed in September, I'd like to invite Eric Dancy, our Director of Security, up to the table to demonstrate our new visitor management system and explain a little bit about the recent security upgrades that we've made. Implementing a visitor management system is a long planned measure, as we've discussed, that's an established best practice, as it complements the single points of entry and access that we've created and planned for in our school offices. You know, frankly, as we've discussed in the past, we're behind the times on this. And this 21st century tool replaces our current visitor clipboard system. That's been in place for decades at schools. Safety of our schools and our students is our highest priority. And the visitor management software provides a consistent system to identify visitors and volunteers. The system quickly prints out visitor badges that include a photo, the name of the visitor, the time, and the date. Driver's license information is compared to a database that consists of registered sex offenders from all 50 states, including Connecticut. The name of the visitor is also checked against custody and court orders that were able to enter in as custom alerts and that pertain to students in schools. The important security measure is that each visitor is issued an individual badge with a specific date, time, and destination, and that we have a record of their access. It's important that we know who's in our buildings at all times, for both the safety of our students and staff and as well as the safety of visitors, if there's an emergency such as a lockdown or a fire. As we've discussed, there's over 20-plus districts neighboring us that have been using this system. And I'd also point to the thousands of schools, hospitals, and organizations that have used this technology and similar technology nationwide and internationally for years. So I'd like Eric, if he would, to talk a little bit about the system and its implementation and some of the other aspects we're going to be putting in place.
Thank you. As Dr. Morrow highlighted, and I have a sample set up of what the system will look like when you walk into a school. It consists of a printer, a computer, and a ID scanner. Now, ID is not a necessity, as far as, you know, a form of positive ID. If you do not have a driver's license or a government ID, if you are a parent, any sort of positive identification, which would identify who you are, will be sufficient. And your information can be manually entered into the system through a couple keystrokes, just like anywhere else. Our current systems that we have in the school are, you know, quite dated, which is, you know, a sign-in with pen and paper. This gives us real-time information, so should an emergency occur inside the school, an evacuation, or anything of the sorts, we could real-time look in the building and know how many visitors we have inside the system. So it's as simple as, when somebody were to come into the building, you would take the license, then you would simply hit "Scan" on the license. The system is scanned into the visitor management system. And then upon scanning the system, it'll return, as quick as that. And then you choose the destination. There are several destinations that we have established, depending on where you're going, a cafeteria, classroom, library, lunchroom. For this purpose, we have Dr. Morrow's ID, and we'll say he's going to the library. So you submit his information into the system, and then, as simple as that, the information is printed out, and the information is handed back to, and if you don't mind running it back over, thank you. And then, upon conclusion of business, visitors are asked to stop back into the office, where they could be signed back out of the school, and so we can keep back your records as to who's in the building. I'd like to give you a couple updates on a couple of projects. And if you have any questions relative to the system, we can go as we move along. But just a couple brief updates. We submitted our Town All Hazards Plan to the state of Connecticut, as required by law. Prior to November 1st, there were no real modifications to our plan. We changed, you know, our security plans, our living documents. We made a couple of amendments to procedure, which were reflected in the plan, and that was submitted to the state of Connecticut on time. Some of our ongoing projects, as we talk about visitor management, trying to bring our schools up to current standards with security. Over the summer, we completed both Aiken, Conard, and Webb Hill, received the updated entryways. So we have a more secure way of, you know, managing who's coming into our buildings, making it easier for our staff to identify. They're busy, you know, working and doing their jobs. So it's a delayed system for visitors coming into the building, where they kind of, when they come in the main entryway, they have to stop by the front office before they are granted access into the entire building. Bugbee, the first half of the project has started. And that work is going to continue into, in the next summer, where they'll be up to speed with the rest of the schools. We also completed work on our lock project for all the secondary schools. So all the middle schools and high schools now have the more up-to-date, current, better-secure locking systems, where we could universally use a universal key, and teachers can lock their classroom doors from the inside. So if they were in another classroom that might have been unlocked, they have one standard key that'll work throughout the district and throughout all the schools inside of every classroom. We also, we have two new guards we hired this year that were able to, we deployed them to our elementary schools, so they're doing a lot of work, jumped right into things at the elementary level. They're working with all the staff, you know, besides the physical presence, working with drills. We continue to work not just with our lockdown drills, but also doing stuff outside, cafeteria, recess. There's always stuff, ways that we can improve ourselves. So those guards have been a tremendous resource and a great improvement. And, you know, parents have commented, they've seen the guards outside, just assisting with bus duty and other things in the morning, as well as dismissal. Our camera system is currently up and running. It's been, you know, we've had it for several years now. As things present themselves, we continue to add and improve our camera system as well. We continue to share, you know, our cameras with the West Hartford Police Department. They have direct access. Our SROs have direct access to the camera system with the iPad. So if there's an event or an emergency going on inside the school, they could real-time look into the school. We got a chance to check that a couple weeks ago, when we had a reported smoke inside of Charter Oak School. And we, you know, I personally was able to log into the camera, look and see that, you know, there was a, you know, a real emergency appeared to be going on in the school. The kids were evacuating the building. Police Department were able to do that as well. And we're actually now expanding that. The fire department has asked for access, so they could real-time look and monitor events if they're going on inside the building. So we're working with the fire department right now to give them access to our cameras inside the school as well.
Thank you, Eric. I think at this point, does anyone have any questions that we can help address? Mark? I'm sorry.
So I guess I'm fortunate, because I have a unique name, and there's not many Zedanowicz's around. But I actually have friends that are on the no-fly list because they have a name. Some aren't even that common. So every time they go through airport security, because of someone else's name, the same name they are, they get kind of held up a little bit. And I'm wondering, what prevents, like, a John Smith or an easily identifiable name, so that you don't have an embarrassing moment when someone's trying to go into the school with their kid, and it could be a John Smith from California that may be the offender? So how does that work?
The way the system is set up is that it's, will present a photo of the person in there. So staff is going to be trained to analyze and look at the photo, clearly see if it's a match, and it's listed in there by name and date of birth. There is no necessary alarm that'll go off. It's nothing that's going to, you know, embarrass the person that's inside the building. It's going to be a pop-up that staff will see, and there's going to be clear instructions that pop up as well, that, you know, that state what the actions are to contact an administrator and, you know, to investigate further. So it's photo ID is primarily how the information is identified.
All right, so the, say there's an offender in California named John Smith. His picture's going to pop up?
Yes.
Okay. And so the John Smith, you can compare the two. Gotcha.
Yes. Again, the idea is to not embarrass anyone, but want to make sure that we know who's in our buildings.
No, no, I get it. But, you know, you can walk in and, you know, a stellar community member of this, you know, and he's a John Smith, and oh, boy, and the guy in California is a John Smith. So I'm just, you know, but that, if you got pictures, then...
Thank you for your presentation. Can you tell me, what happens with the data we currently collect around who's visiting the buildings, which I think is just the clipboard system? And what will happen in the new system that we're using with the data?
I can tell you that it depends on the school, what happens with the data on the clipboard. Usually, the page, once it's filled, goes to the back of the sheet, and that's about it. Occasionally, it is recycled or tossed. I think with this information, where it goes is nowhere. It simply resides in the database, as far as who's accessed when. We're able to delete it at any time. And so we would have a situation where every three months, if there's no need for us to contain or continue holding that data, we would go ahead and just delete that data.
Yeah, so thank you for that. Just to clarify, so this is a third-party system, though, right? Somebody else has control over our data in this situation versus what we currently use, right?
Correct. The company, yes, the company maintains the system for it. But again, to clarify, the data is name, date of birth, and the time that they accessed a building. That's the only identifying information.
So you see what the ID looks like that staff will be wearing, or parents?
Dave? Well, I just want to come clean myself. When I first read this, it sounds interesting. I didn't think much of it. And then we received, all of members of the Board of Ed received a letter from the group at Charter Oak. And I really appreciate that, because it's good to get input from other points of view, all our different schools. Even though this happened to come from Charter Oak, I'm sure folks at Norfelt and other schools in town have the same questions. So I really thank them for bringing this forward. And I encourage everyone to keep that up, that communication, because that's what we're here for, is to answer your questions. And if they don't come directly to us, you know, it doesn't occur to us, it's important that you bring it to our attention. You know, Eric, I just, as I watched the demonstration, I'm just curious and thinking of things as parents go there. And I visit schools. I've been fortunate enough to visit the schools. It had a blue light when it was like in a ready status, and then it seemed yellow when it was in process. But what caught my eye was that it was a green light, I guess, when the ID popped out. If it was a misread, would it turn red or something like that?
Correct. It'll do that. I've actually had some old licenses from my law enforcement days that were legal licenses, and I've experimented with a couple different things. And it'll actually capture, you know, it just reads, it's not really barcode scanning, but it's grabbing the data off it. So it might take the photo off. So if somebody has an ID, we've tried a bunch of different ones, different states. I've been trying to vet it, you know, through my office, just to experience any problems before, you know, we encounter them in the schools. And we're also going to be piloting it at one of our schools before we go live with the whole thing, to, so we know there's going to be some hiccups along the way. So Wolkett is going to be one of our schools that we're going to be trying to roll it out with first, before we go, you know, for all the 16 schools as well. But yes, the red light is also, will let you know either it's a bad read, and it'll also tell you on the display itself if there's an issue. But it will still capture sometimes, if there's just a photo, if somebody might have an ID, even though it doesn't capture the name and date of birth, it could grab the photo, or it'll grab, and it'll show the user and user on the screen what's in front of them.
And I'm just thinking, it's the visitor, the parent who's there, and it's just a simple misread. Well, if I see a red light pop up there, my heart's going to skip a little beat that I come up as, for some reason. So perhaps it's a good idea to give a script or something, or when we train our staff, or how they might explain a red light to the visitor to prevent that anxiety.
And we have that, actually, in the protocol for that with the training, Dave. And thank you for also, and so you know that, you know, I believe that Juan is working with the group to set up a time for Rosina and I to sit down and answer any questions that they have. The goal, as you said, is not to exclude people, but to know who's in our buildings from a safety standpoint. I will tell you, and we hear this from teachers and staff, and you know, being in the building as well, it can be a little frightening nowadays, if you see an adult walking into, walking down the hall, and you don't know who that person is. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to create situations, not only for students, but also for our staff, to know that visitors in the building have a legitimate ID with a photo that talks about their destination and the time, so that we know who's supposed to be in our buildings and who isn't.
And the photo brings up a point. As I looked at the company's website, I thought I understood that the photo is not actually stored in the database, if I read that properly. But then when I saw the ID printed out, which we just did now, it printed out your photo that it scanned. Is that, how does that work?
The, what it does is it collects the ID photo, the first name, the last name, and the date of birth. Okay, and so the photo is stored on our system, so that if a parent then comes in or a visitor comes in the next day, all we have to do is type in the name and print out the form. So we don't have to re-scan an ID or a license the subsequent times.
Okay, so if they recognize me, hey, Dave, how are you? And here's your thing. They might ask where I'm headed.
Exactly. We'd ask where you're headed, but then you'd have the badge that showed the ID and the time.
Okay, thanks. And I get full disclosure, I actually got a preview of this at the Parent Teacher Council last week, but I've had a week to mull things over, so thank you so much. And the last one, I just took a peek at my license, you know, I haven't gotten any tickets. I was able to automatically renew, and the picture's a little old. It had some more air. We're going to see that from time to time, where the picture doesn't really match the way the person looks today. What's our plan there?
Again, it's not, our issue is not, you know, making sure that you match up, you know, identically to your photo. It's making sure that we know who you are. And if we know who you are, then that's enough.
So that, just segue, so if I walk in, you know, the administration at Hall knows me, I still have to, I still have to go through this. They're not just saying, hey, Mark, right? So I still have to put my license in once, and then subsequently, I just walk in and type my name in? No license exchange, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, like, how long does it stay stored for? Like, do I have to do it once a year, once every six months?
If we stick with our initial protocol of clearing the database every three months, it would be every three months.
Thanks. I have a few questions also. How long is the contract for this? So what I'm wondering is, if it does have some unintended consequences or affects parent engagement, is there some sort of time that you're going to be reviewing something like this?
We review anything on an ongoing basis. This is a relatively inexpensive method of security for us, and we have a one-year contract for this.
So it's something that you're going to roll it out, starting at Wolkett, and then evaluate? And so this isn't something that's etched in stone for years at a time?
No, it's not. I would argue that we need some sort of system. And I think this is a good solution to what we've been looking for.
Okay. My other question is, so there's a number of different languages spoken in Wolkett. So how are families going to get more information about this, if it was introduced to them in English? How are you handling this?
The idea there, again, was that each of the elementary schools or each of the secondary schools would be the best prepared to speak about this with their community. And so that's our expectation, and that's what we're going to be working with the principals on, is as they're going ahead and exploring this and explaining this to their communities.
But in writing, not just, so if they're not, it's not just going to be in person? So their translation services are going to be there? Okay. Is this the same system that they do use in the hospitals?
My understanding is, I know a few of the hospitals do use the, I believe it's the same system. I think the Children's Hospital has the same one, and actually, Krec has just rolled out, for all the Krec schools, has the exact same system.
Okay, so for parents who might be worried about identity theft or data storage and selling of data from different parties, it's been used for a number of systems over a long enough period of time to have some...
It sounds like, we vetted this through our IT department before we went online with it, and we talked to them to make sure it meets, you know, all the data privacy requirements as well. And they, you know, told us that it, you know, meets all the standards.
Yep.
Okay. And how are you going to handle, so if someone comes up who doesn't have a photo ID, how are you going to handle that with the badge? Just go name-only, and it's at the discretion of the administration, because they know the person coming in, or...
Yes. I mean, if they're a parent or an emergency contact, you know, there's other ways of vetting it as well. Power School is one, too, so we could, and, you know, our staff knows, you know, the parental community as well. So, you know, if there was a random person, we've had random people try to get access to our buildings. It happens more frequently than not, that somebody will come in and want to use the bathroom, and, you know, that's not a place to use the public restroom. So something, you know, if it's a parent, or somebody, there's other ways that we could vet it through Power School, our residency office. You know, we have even more frequently, you know, custodial orders that come out, or there's a custodial issue. We could update, you know, with real-time information. So if somebody is not supposed to be near a child, or, you know, a visitation has been excluded, we could update the information and put an alert in there, like we do in Power School already, that we could put the alert into Raptor as well, so that they could, might want to check with an administrator, if, you know, if the person comes to scan in, if they're not maybe supposed to have that child.
Okay. And then my final question is just about, if there are adults coming into the building, whether they're parents or people who might be coming for special occasions or events at school, if someone is going through some sort of agenda reassignment, and the, you know, that kind of information on a license or document can take a long time relative to experience someone's having, is it the onus on the person checking in to then have to explain that to the person behind the desk? Or has there, or will there be some conversation about how to handle that sensitively?
We'll definitely talk with the staff at the schools. We'll definitely talk with, with the staff at the schools how to handle that in a sensitive manner. And, and really, again, the idea is not that we, we want people to be comfortable in our schools. And so regardless of, of name that they would prefer and so forth, we can certainly work with, with people on that. But we need to know, again, uh, we just need to make sure that, that they have a purpose in being there.
Alright, thank you.
Just a quick comment. So it, it's my understanding that the whole purpose of this was to standardize the process by which people enter our buildings across the district. Because as we all know, like, when I go into KP, the security guard is, is very stiff. But when I go into Aiken, it's a little more touchy-feely, 'cause it's elementary level, and I've been there for a dozen years, so they know Rob, so they just kinda let me in. And this is, so this is a change, but this is, I think, a positive change to kinda just, so that the community learns that no matter which school you go into, it's gonna be the same process, right? Like, just like when you enter other government buildings, like you show your ID, what have you. And I assume that when you looked into this system, you, you vetted other vendors and you, you, you did some research. And this was the one that you wanted to settle on that you thought would work best for our community, correct?
Yeah, correct, Rob. We did. We looked at, we looked at a number of different systems. And again, the goal is not to exclude people, but to know who's in the building and to do so in a safe manner. We ultimately chose this system. Uh, this system is the, the, really the industry leader in that, um, as I mentioned, over twenty other districts in Connecticut, including Plainville, Bristol, Bristol, New Britain, Weathersfield, Wolkett, Berlin, Canton, Region Seven, Ten, Twelve, Fourteen, Krec, Avon. These are Canton, uh, these are systems that, this is the system they've been using and had great success with.
Right, so West Hartford's not like the guinea pig here. There's a lot of historical, and you guys did your homework on that.
By far not the guinea pig, and since, as I said beforehand, we're behind the curve in a system like this.
We actually, we actually contacted, we spoke with numerous communities as well to see any, you know, hurdles or stumbling blocks. And, you know, that's why, particularly with the Raptor system, it was, the, the feedback was, uh, was very positive. So we, you know, reached out and made numerous phone calls to those districts.
Sounds like a thorough response. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this information. I, I, I'll speak for myself, but I think for all of us here, our main priority, of course, is the safety of our young people here in town. And I think that's a shared belief of all of our, the parents or caregivers here in town as well. And something that is also very impressive of our caregivers and parents here in town is that we are inquisitive. So I respect the fact that questions are being asked of how this will unfold and, and, and process through. You all have had the information, you've had time to digest it. Um, for those of us that are now just receiving it, we're learning to digest it. So I certainly imagine that you will continue to, um, welcome questions that may come from others and meetings that may happen as well. Just to make sure that there's continued transparency and everyone feels a part of the overall goal of maintaining the safety of our young people, as well as, uh, maintaining a culture of inclusivity and, and welcoming and all of that. So thank you for this information, and thank you for being open to, uh, continued questions as well.
So, we kinda mentioned, like, if, and I, I guess I didn't realize or think about this. So if a parent or guardian does not have child visitation, and they check in and it's in the system, either Power School or this one, that parent can't come in, correct?
If there's a, you know, a restraining order, protective order, a custodial order, um, that was brought to the residency office, brought the attention of the school, we will update not only Power School, but, you know, we will incorporate it into our visitor management system, yes.
So the, that parent cannot come into the school?
If they're not, if by, yeah, if they're not allowed to be, uh, near the child, yes.
Okay, so then I guess my next question, um, is if a, uh, parent happens to be, uh, identified as a sexual offender, are they allowed into the school system as well? Or, because you said you wanna know who's there, so you know there are, but so what's the rules there?
There's, and again, this is in our protocol for it, there's, there's different legal responsibilities there. Um, depending on whether, what the purpose of the visit is. Uh, the, we, if they are there for a, a PPT, a meeting like that, it would be something that's escorted. It would then be something that would be held then out of the classroom, perhaps, in a, in a more of administrative area. Uh, the bottom line is, is that no one is excluded in that sense, but they're certainly going to be escorted.
But not the non-visitational?
No, for a custodial, if there's a non-vis, if there's a court order, then there's a court order, correct?
Good.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, I, I know we were, we had a lot of questions about the first part of what you presented. Um, but we didn't wanna overlook the second part of what you presented, which was about the locks and all the other pieces of security that you've been doing. Um, and thank you for that, because your work's been very extensive. And I know the parent community has said a lot about their appreciation for that also, so, thank you. I'm sure that's especially reassuring for the teachers, um, with the locking mechanisms from the inside and the universal keys.
Thank you. And, you know, one thing I'll add is that it's, it's a joint effort. You know, it's, it's not just security, it's all the departments coming together, our plants and facilities. Um, that's, you know, going out to bid and grabbing all this, um, working with our police department, you know, to see best practices. Um, Dr. Martin, I just actually met with the police chief today. Just, we have quarterly meetings just to update things that are going on. Um, things we're planning out, some additional training we're gonna be rolling out hopefully for the schools as well. So it's one thing we do well, it's work together and, um, and communicate well, uh, in the town. It's something I'm, I'm very proud of.
So Eric, I have a couple of questions. Um, great questions all around, um, from the board members. But my question may be a silly one. What happens if the system goes down?
If the system goes down, we go back to the, uh, the old-fashioned system. Uh, we actually talked about probably ordering a couple of extra, you know, a quick, once, we were gonna pilot, obviously, at Wolkett. And we'll see, you know, what, what the needs are, because a printer could break, uh, a scanner could break. So we're gonna probably have to order, you know, a couple backup, um, you know, printers and scanners if that were to happen. But if something were to go down, uh, we go back to the, you know, the old-fashioned way of just, uh, just signing people into the building.
Then my second question, as you begin to roll this out and use, um, Wolkett as the pilot school, and I'm hoping that you'll do this, and more than likely you will. But to have a list of acceptable IDs, so for instance, if somebody happens to lose their ID or misplaced it or can't find it, but they have to go to the school, um, will you, and I'm sure you will, list things for people to have as a backup for identification? I don't know, passport or something else. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I mean, a, any acceptable form of, you know, ID, um, you know, will work in the system. Again, and particularly as we mentioned, if they are already entered into our system, you know, then every time you come in, if you're a, a frequent volunteer inside the school, and if we follow our protocol, and when you're getting buzzed into the school, you say, hi, you know, I'm, uh, Mrs. So-and-so. Um, the, the, the staff could type the name in there and almost have that ID printing out by the time you're entering the building, 'cause you're a, already a known person. That's the majority, ninety percent of the people are coming in and out of the buildings are, are parents that are, you know, you know, helping out, volunteering inside the classrooms every day. So, yeah, there's gonna be numerous forms of, of identification that, you know, will be acceptable.
Final question, in terms of the staff that will be trained, is it just your front office staff that will receive training in terms of the...
It'll be front office as well as our security staff that will be, that will be trained as well. Our administrators have, have had some exposure to this, but we'll continue to have it as we roll out at the different schools.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. That was a great presentation. Isabella has a question.
Um, this is going back to the first part of, um, the superintendent report about the, um, professional development workshops. Um, yesterday, I wanted to say that I've heard a lot of positive feedback from teachers, um, today during school about the professional development workshops. Um, and as a student in the school system, it's heartening to hear about how these experiences have really impacted the teachers and, um, how it's prompting them to take a deeper look at the content that they bring into the classroom. And so I just wanted to say that the impacts of, um, the workshops yesterday are being felt by, um, students in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It's awesome. Thanks again, Eric. Alright. Next up is staff reports and board discussions. Uh, we will have the nutrition services update, farm-to-table. Um, background will be delivered by Mr. Tim Przynski, and Ms. Elizabeth Hewitt will report. And we all have some great gifts at our board table.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't wait. I had to...
We, we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna comment on that, Mark, but, uh...
But it was noticed.
Yep. So we're very excited to be here tonight. Oh, Tim is very excited. And I just wanted to, to share that, you know, we all believe that Tim has done a, a great job in stabilizing our nutrition service program and the budget, and we all owe him well-deserved thanks for doing that. This is very exciting with this program, uh, in that it's really a farm-to-lunch table program. And I want him to be able to explain the program and, and the work that they're doing as well. And then Liz will give a little bit of a background on some of the financials.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thanks for having me tonight. The first thing I wanna talk about is, we were fortunate, um, last year that I worked with, um, Tim Kessler at Connerd High School and, um, Kirsten Sanderson at Charter Oak. And they wrote some grant proposals to the foundation of, um, West Hartford Public Schools. And we were able to get two of the Evan Lee indoor growing systems. And each rack holds four of these trays that are, four of these trays, sixteen of these trays that you see right here. And we started planting them towards the, about the middle to the end of August. And the systems have gone over really, really well. Primarily what we're growing is lettuce greens like you see right here. Kind of for obvious reasons, it's, it's the quickest turnaround. We go from a seed to what you're seeing here, the very, as soon as we plant the seeds to here in twenty-one days. The students come in, they harvest it, they eat it that day or the next day. We've even shared with some bordering schools with, um, Charter Oak and with Connerd. And then fourteen days later, we've got this again. Fourteen days later, we have this again. And then we start the process all over again. The soil and the remaining, um, plants that are in here after the third, um, harvesting goes into a compost bin. We put new soil in, and that rotation just keeps going on. It's been a great system. Um, one of the things that we have from the system is the basil that you're, that is, each one of you has, that we're gonna be using, um, we've been using that at Connerd to mix in with some of our dishes. We've had fresh cilantro there. Um, we do have an, what I call an action station over there, where I actually cook in front of the, uh, for the students. So the basil's gonna get incorporated into that, now that we're getting into the colder months, into November and December. So we're excited about it. It is primarily, uh, like a leafy green kinda thing. We, you can use these systems to, to grow actual vegetables and tomatoes. But the turnaround and the yield on it is, 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 um, quite lengthy. And, uh, this has gone over very, very well. And we're, we're very thankful and Nutrition Services to work with, uh, Mr. Kessler and, and Ms. Sanderson with this, to, to, um, work this project with the students, and they, they really seem to enjoy it. Um, we actually had a nice day a few weeks back with the, um, Farm-to-Table Month, October was. And we had a, a senator there, um, myself, this is at Charter Oak. And we had some parents come, we had the local West Hartford newspaper there, and the, um, Hartford Current, they wrote up some articles on it. So it was, it was a lot of fun. We did some nice photos with, with the children, and it was great. But along with that, we've been able to, um, we partnered with Rogers Orchards. And we are getting on a weekly basis, um, fresh apples and pears from them that we're serving in all the schools. Kind of just as a little side thing, um, actually, our, our manager at Connerd had mentioned that years back that the, um, cider went over well. So we started ordering the cider, and it, this is not part of what we call a reimbursable meal or, or a full nutritious meal for the students, it's just, it's sold à la carte. But it's one hundred percent, it's just squeezed apples, there's nothing added. And our order coming in, we went from twelve cases, and our order coming in next week will go to seventy-five cases. The students are loving it, they're really enjoying it. We do see a lot of recognition that they see the name Rogers, which is wonderful. We have signage out for all the apples and the pears that they see. It does come from a local farm. And that has gone over really well. Along with that, we do, it's written here that we do invest, um, we get on average about two-hundred-and-thirty-five, two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars of our grant money that comes from the USDA and the state of Connecticut to use to purchase our foods through different, different systems, whether it goes out for future processing or whatever. And here in the nineteen-twenty school year, we've taken eighty thousand dollars of that and invested it in just fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables that all that can, that can come from there. All those fresh fruits and vegetables that comes through, are one of our major distributors, when possible, is either sourced in Connecticut, then they go out farther to a neighboring state. And then it just goes out farther and farther, but it's all in the continental US. So they do, we do, or they do their best to bring it in local. Um, every week when we order, it is listed on there what state it comes from. And week after week, I see Maine, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island. Um, and of course, as the winter months come on, you know, we'll start to see, you know, the Carolinas, Florida, Texas, that type of thing. But it is all fresh and it's, um, coming in. And it's gone really well. The kids have been very, um, receptive to it. We've taken it to the simplest form as to just take these fruits and vegetables and as simple as just putting them on the side as an option for them to grab, to they, they physically choose it themselves. And it's gone over really, really well. Um, a little bit of knife skills need to be taught, which I enjoy. And, um, it's gone, it's gone very, very well. And that's where we are pretty much right now with the, with the, uh, farm-to, farm-to-table or farm-to-school program.
Thank you, Tim. Um, as Andy had mentioned, you know, this, uh, nutrition services program was a program that we were concerned about. We were, um, looking at the financial stability of the program, um, and Tim has really turned it around. And so, uh, on page two of your book, uh, I provided a three-year financial history, just so you can see the trend of what's happening in our nutrition services program. You'll see over the years from seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, that we've had significant increases in our federal and state grant revenue. Um, some of those funds, as Tim had mentioned, we are able to use directly for purchase, um, of goods. Uh, you'll notice under our expenses that our salaries and benefits have gone down considerably. Um, Tim has done a terrific job of really managing our labor hours, um, despite increased salaries and making sure that we are controlling our costs, and our food and supplies line has gone down as well. So you'll see, when we look at our net change and fund balance, this program has had positive results for all of the past three years. In fact, in this past year, we were actually able to use some of our surplus to purchase a new point-of-sale system for all of the cafeterias. Uh, it was an outdated system, something that really needed replacement, and we were able to do that without any kind of influx of funding from either the general fund or the capital fund. Um, the nutrition services program is self-supporting. We expect that for the current year, that, um, the results should be similar. And, uh, we feel confident that the program really has stabilized itself and will continue to be a success. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
So, you know, as a, an elected official, our job is sometimes very hard and, um, difficult. And I want you to know that I, I went to bat for you guys and tasted this early. So to make sure that, you know, what we're getting into the school systems is quality, and this is exactly what it is. So, thank you. I appreciate it. And I've, I've watched this for the last seven years, this budget. And, um, and I've, I've appreciated what you've done, um, in steering this particular piece, um, and the things that you're doing. And this particular venture is, I, I think I wanna implement this at my house, actually. Um, the yield you're getting, that'd be great. And, and kids experiencing this, and to hear that you're, you're ordering so many more cases of this. Because I can remember back when bottled water was our cash cow, if you will, because we were getting so much money off à la carte that. Now that this is, you know, it's nutritious, it's great, and so this is a win-win. And, um, just, thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions?
Thanks for coming, Tim. It's good to see you. And Liz, thanks for the insight into the, uh, the trend with the, um, financial situation. As a former financial examiner, we've got Deb and, and Mark here, the current financial examiners. It's just exciting to see that. So thank you, Tim, and also to the, the team, uh, the folks out in each of the schools and working the kitchens, uh... Has it been two years ago, Rob, Rob and I got to have lunch at Cedric with Principal Clapsaddle a while ago? And, uh, it was a good experience. We enjoyed it. Yeah, well, he bought lunch, yeah. But, uh, yeah, it was really neat. So thank you. It's, it's neat to see what's going on, uh, in the schools. And, Tim, I appreciated what you mentioned, that you listened to your staff. I think you said one of the managers at Connerd just made that comment. Keep it up, you know, that's good, because I know the staff appreciates it when that happens. And the students appreciate getting some different options as well. Uh, just, thank you for all you've done and, and the time that you've been here. And we look forward to, uh, I'll be leaving the board, but I'll still be watching from time to time, and I hope to hear more good news.
Thank you very, I do, I do have to mention that when I came here, there, there was a, you know, a, a financial, um, you know, deficit and stuff. So I, I basically sat down with the managers and, you know, I... So I basically sat down with the managers and, you know, I was new. There are 16 schools. They've been here for a while. And I, I just kind of threw it out to them. I mean, I made some observations on my own, but they know the inner workings of all the schools better than I did. And they, they came up with the, you know, when, when, when they mentioned, you know, watching labor and labor reduction, you know, those are, those are sometimes tough things. And they, they stepped right up to the, to the plate. So they, without the, there are six managers that work supervising the, the schools and they've done a tremendous job, not just with that part of it, but with coming up with innovative ways of that we could do different things to save money, using this DOD money the proper way so that we're, that we're saving money. And we're coming up with some, some fun and new exciting food ideas too. So they, they certainly do deserve huge kudos for that. Thanks.
I absolutely love this and I appreciate the presentation tonight. How can we as a board support you in continuing ideas and innovations like this and maybe even expanding them to other schools?
Well, when this, when this first came out, the, this, I saw this system actually at a, at a trade show, actually just about a year ago to, from, from this month. I'm actually going to it next week. And it was always in the back of my mind. And I actually, my office is right next to the foundation for West Hartford. And I was, I just kind of walked in and I, and the, the woman who works in there, Kristin, yes, thank you, I was struggling there, explained to me exactly what it was. And the, the timeframe was very short. I mean, it was like they had to have the grant applications in in like 10 days. And I, I'm going to be honest with you, I've never written a grant application. I'm sure it's, it's not a simple process. And when I went to the two schools that I mentioned it to, they, they were all over it. Maybe with things like that, you know, maybe just a little bit of, I'm not quite sure, you know, if the funding would be, would be there or maybe with assistance with other schools, if they wanted to move forward with this. I mean, I'll be honest with you, the systems that we have there, we, I didn't, I wasn't shy. We went for the largest ones, but we can certainly get smaller ones at, you know, let's say like at an Aiken or other schools that would be less expensive, but would still do the same thing. And we can, we can certainly would have, you know, be able to reap the benefits of it, you know, not only from my side, from serving it to the, to the children and them experiencing that and enjoying it, but I believe the, the science teachers and those people are really enjoying it also.
Thank you very much for sharing the information. Question, in terms of, and it's, I imagine a rhetorical question, but recognizing the equipment purchases and the amount that was spent this year, is that significant increase because of the item that was purchased? Okay. And, and secondly, I think it's wonderful that with being able to grow on vegetables and certainly the, the lettuce items here. I know for many on the menu in the cafeteria, that it costs a little bit more if you're going to have salad on the salad bar, which kind of is, boy, we want our young people to eat more vegetables and salads, but darn, that's a bit pricier on the menu list. Is this something that you could possibly see in the future, being able to grow more of these that, that may cut down the cost for a salad bar or things of that sort?
Last year, we, I, with, with Webb Hill, Aiken, Morley, I believe at Norfelt, what we did is we took fresh fruits and vegetables and we just, we pre-portioned them and we put them out on a more consistent basis for the, for the children to take them. And it was extremely successful. We did some taste testing and that went over really well. So, so far this year, we, we've ceased on the, on the salad bar because the waste that the salad bar generated was tremendous. I don't, the poundage, I don't even want to really generate it. So we're concentrating more on this being an offering with the, with the meal every day. So it isn't, won't be any additional cost. It's, we're just going to incorporate it into the lunch.
And so thank you for clarifying that. And so for the middle school and high school though, I do believe they do offer salad bar?
Correct. And we are, we are going to work on, on bringing this more of a mainstream thing there that I can look into having to definitely curtail the, the cost of that. And so that it's, it's more of a, you know, a utilized item that more of the students would be able to have access to.
Thank you again.
I just wanted to say thank you for your work and dedication. I know from the student perspective, when we see you in the cafeteria, you get really excited. The chef is here, like, have you gone to lunch? And also for the orchard, I've been having two apples a day and they're really good. And I just, it makes me feel better knowing like there's not an excuse to not have a healthy lunch at school and knowing that you guys are looking into that Furnishance Services. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that. My son won't eat salad at home, but man, he likes eating at his school all the time. So my question's more for Liz. I, I was looking at the, and Tim, thanks, great, great presentation. Appreciate everything that you've done. I, I just being the finest guy, like, was wondering how concerned as a board we should be when you look at these grants, how they've increased over the last three years? I mean, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but are you at all concerned that that could change and go back down? Because if you look at the positive income, a lot of it is tied to the grant increase. So if we, if we suddenly went back to 2017 or older numbers, the, the program wouldn't look as solid again. And there's no way reflecting that Tim's not doing a great job. I, I think that's so in spite of his efforts, you know, it's still, it seems like a little bit of a struggle.
Well, so many of the federal and state grants are related to free and reduced lunch students. And so that's an amount that is set every year and that we get reimbursed for. There's an annual increase and I do not think we're at risk of, of losing those grants.
Okay. And the other thing I was wondering then too, like, do you, do you think though that, because my question wasn't really about losing the grants, but how they model like the, the formulas for them as far as, do you, do you hear anything about that they might make the models more restrictive in the sense that, wow, we may not lose the grant, but the grants might therefore become less? And do, have you heard anything about any changes like that or?
We haven't heard anything about changes like that. And they do, as I said, they review the amounts every year and what we're seeing are incremental, not large increases, but incremental increases every year on a per lunch basis with no indication at this point that it will be more restrictive.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One else?
Okay, so I just have a couple of questions. So the juice is offered à la carte and the fruits offered à la carte, right?
The fruits, the fruits are part of their lunch. They can take them as part of their lunch. Every day they, they, a student can take fruits and/or vegetables. So this is part of their lunch. This is an à la carte item. For the students to purchase it, $2. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I was a little, that's, I had the same reaction, but and that's what we had to go with for it to be, and I was, had the same reaction you did, but 12 cases to 75, I mean.
So it doesn't seem to be deterring purchases?
Correct. It'll, I'll be honest, this will only last about another month. And even if it was available all year long, it, it'll fade. It fades out. You know what I mean?
Another comment, and that was, I love the collaboration with the local farms. So kudos to you and your staff for working with our local farm, farmers. I think that's so key and so important. And also the inclusivity of our students and teaching them how to grow these fruits and vegetables, because that is something that they can take well into their adult years and even sometimes have just the vegetables for a meal that night. I just think that's great. I think what you all are doing is wonderful, so.
And just one quick side note I forgot to mention, the Yukon Extension is a, is a big part of the farm to table, farm to plate for schools. And I was very fortunate this summer that I got a phone call from Yukon. And they have a young lady that works there by the name of Molly Deegan. She's actually a resident of West Hartford. And she came over, met with me, and she was a big part of giving me the list of the different farms that, you know, that will work with schools and that are, you know, they, they've got to be like, you know, they have to be vetted and we have to be able to purchase from them, you know, we can't. And she gave, gave us the list of everything and, you know, even gave me some promotional things to promote this program. And she's been a big part of, of it. And I'm very excited about, you know, moving forward with her and, and doing other, other items that are, that we can get from the local farms.
That's wonderful. I always love to hear those stories about our Yukon or our West Hartford residents circling back and continuing to participate in our school district. So wonderful job. Thank you. No other questions? All right. Thank you.
This is up for grams, whoever wants it.
Oh, wonderful. I was hoping that you were going to say that.
I think you'd be the perfect person for it.
Okay. Next on our agenda item is the enrollment and class size analysis as of October 1st, 2019. And Mrs., Ms. Elizabeth Hewitt will also give us a background report along with Paul Vicinus.
So you have our enrollment and class size analysis as of October 1st of this year. We want to address three areas. First, it's a summary of our official 10-1 enrollments. As you may recall, we went over some estimates on the first day of school, but 10-1 is our official enrollment data. I would like to provide some comparisons as to how our actual enrollment compares to both the prior year and then what we had projected for the current year. And then we want to review class sizes with you at both the elementary, middle, and high school level. So from an enrollment perspective, on October 1st, we had 9,159 K to 12 students. From a comparison standpoint, the first day of school, we had just about 9,200. So just a little bit less than that. If you look on page four of our report, you can see in the top chart, we have a comparison to actual 2018 as well as our projected 2019 at each level of school. We had anticipated that there would be a reduction of 90 students this year from the prior year. What we actually experienced was a reduction of 154 students, variance of 64 students, less than 1%. It's really accurate projections. And we are expecting similar declines next year, probably about 125 to 135 students is our estimate at this point in time, although we will do a complete enrollment analysis and present that to you, I believe in January. When we look at class sizes at each level, we find that they're very consistent with the prior years. At an elementary level, our average class size is currently 19.8 students. As comparison, our guidelines are 23 students for K to 3 and 27 for fourth and fifth grade. And at our magnet schools, Smith and Charter Oak, our guideline is 21 students for K to 3 and 25 students for fourth and fifth grade. On a middle school and high school level, which is on page five of your report, you'll see that our middle schools have anywhere from an average of 19.1 to 19.8 students per class, very consistent with prior years. And our high schools, when we look at our core classes, have approximately 21 students. And then on an overall basis, have a lower number, 20, when we include electives and other classes. So the first pages of this report really provide information on a summary level. There are then tables that continue that give more information by school, by subject, et cetera. So table one, which is on page six, is a familiar format. This is what we had reviewed earlier. This shows our enrollment by grade and by school. You'll also see on here the number of sections for each elementary school. When we look at table two, you have a comparison of our projections to what we actually have experienced, both on a grade level and then on a school level. I had mentioned that overall district-wide, really our projections were very consistent. You lose a little bit of that accuracy as you get to by grade and by school, but on an overall basis, you, you can see the variances and that they were relatively minor. As we go to table three, this is where we start to look at our elementary class size comparison. If you look at the far right column, this is the number of sections in the current school year that have the number of students denoted on the left-hand side. So you can see when we get to the higher levels, the, you know, 26, 27, 28, we have no sections that are outside of those guidelines. Tables four through six then give more details for each of the three middle schools. You'll see the department, the number of sections, our average class size, and then information as to how many of those sections fall within each of the number of student categories. Also provided is information regarding full-time equivalent employees for each of those areas. And finally, on tables seven and eight, we have information for both Conard High School and for Hall High School. These two pages provide a little more information, not just the core subjects, but some of our other electives or unified arts classes. But similar information, the number of sections, our average per class, and then how those classes fall within the various brackets. It's certainly a lot of detailed information. I'm sure perhaps you had a chance to look at it over the weekend and might have some specific questions. And if so, Paul and I are happy to answer those. But I think from an overall basis, it, it really says that the year is turning now as expected and as planned. We are happy with the, the class sizes, the distributions of those, and are in line with our expectations as far as enrollment overall.
Questions? No questions?
So I think this is my third go around seeing this, so it's starting to finally look familiar. You know, I'm looking at the breakdown of the school populations on table one. So everybody knows where I'm looking. And I would just like to hear your thoughts on how our, obviously like, we have a very small, like we're taking a gradual, soft landing as we go down in enrollment, every year. But when you break that down among our, all of our schools, at what point do you see a lack of a critical mass at a school anymore? With some of these elementary school populations, like, do you, do you see projections in the next three years, five years, or even further out where, and I know it gets hard to go anywhere beyond five or even three, but, you know, it seems like a few of our schools are, are getting on, on a smaller and smaller matriculation every year. And at what point do you think that's something the district should be planning for as far as, is it, is it still a viable location to have a school? Because obviously, as we've heard from, for years from Chip, like, you know, these, these things go in cycles, just like everything. Like, I'm in the real estate market. We go up, we go down. Lately, we've just kind of been going flat. But, you know, the school, same thing. So, you know, we seem to be going gradually down, but at some point, you know, do we feel that, is it time to do something different? And I just wanted to hear what you thought on that.
I think you're right that at this point in time, we are seeing gradual declines and they seem to be spread out amongst the various schools. So I don't think we've reached the point where we're at a critical mass that, that we should be making changes. However, to be honest, I don't feel that I have the experience or enough experience really to talk about that. And so I would defer to Andy as to his thoughts on that.
We've, and Rob, we've looked at this and, and will continue to do so and we'll, we'll bring this up again in January. And we, that's really when we look forward with our forecast on this. But we're not seeing, where we're at now is really where we were 13, 14 years ago as far as, as far as the numbers in our, in our schools, especially at the elementary level. And so as you said, with the cycles, we don't see a, a point where we're able to, to look at a school and say, you know, there's capacity elsewhere for these students. I, I don't know that we're going to get to that point. And if we do get to that point, it's then a conversation that requires and impacts all of the elementary schools, because it would be a complete, a complete switch across the districts and across the different individual elementary districts. It's not as easy as saying, well, if we close this one, we can just move them next door to this one. We just don't have that kind of capacity.
Right. I'm not talking about today or tomorrow. I mean, it seems like we finally have some breathing room, right? Where, you know, it's just like, okay.
And we do look, we do look four, five, 10 years down the road and we'll continue to, to look at that point.
Right. Because obviously where I'm going with this is like, it's a budget driver, right? Where, you know, right? Where, you know, obviously, nobody likes to hear about a school closing, but at some point, it's our job as board members and as senior staff to have those type of projections and thoughts, so.
No, I would agree. But I would also, I would also put out there, and I know Tom's mentioned it in the past, that in essence, in the last 10 years, we've closed a school. We have 31 fewer elementary sections, which is the size of Duffy.
Right.
So in essence, we have closed a school. And when you talk about the savings that come with that, I mean, that's really then a staffing issue. It's just that this has occurred over 11 elementary schools, that this pullback has occurred.
Right. No, and I'm just trying to talk to the, like, we hear it a lot, like, and that's a great line that Tom gives about, and I think it's impactful. But just, you know, you hear in the community, and for anybody that watches on TV or reads about it in the news, they often, I know Mark's got these questions too, like, where, I imagine you guys do as well, where they're like, well, you know, what's going on exactly? Like, it seems like the enrollments are going down, and, you know, why isn't there more abrupt change going on with schools and things like that? And, you know, what you just said is very true, where it's a little bit of, a few kids here, a few kids there. However, at some point, I assume you guys, when you have your budget meetings or whatever, you do have that discussion at some point where, you know, what is a baseline where you're like, well, if granted, if we lose three kids from Aiken, we're not shutting down. My daughter would cry. But if you all of a sudden see a trend where over a period of years, you know, Aiken dropped, and I mention Aiken because it's where my kids go, so it's, I hope nobody's freaking out, that, you know, what, at what point do you guys see in your models, you know, it doesn't make a sense to close a school, but at some point, you know, would you see that as a potential discussion point? And I would just be curious to know if you've researched it or thought that out, like, you know, what would be the number? You know, like, if a school dropped below 200 kids, would that be a number that maybe we'd think about it? Or is this something that you haven't discussed?
No, we have discussed, and we've looked at it, and we'll continue to then look at the forecasting. I think for us, what it comes down to is when we look at, when we look at the sections in a building, if a grade level is dropping below two sections consistently, then those are the kind of questions that we have to ask at that point. But again, every time that we think we are understanding and seeing where some of the trends go, for example, at Whiting Lane, they surprise us. And kids enroll that we weren't projecting and weren't expecting. And so that stabilizes from an enrollment standpoint. So it's something that we continue and we work with Liz very closely on, and we'll continue to monitor. But that's really, for us, one of the benchmarks.
Good to know. Thank you.
So, Andy, in January, we look at this again. And I can't remember what it looks like, but do we give history of enrollment per school, like, 10 years ago to now, in that report?
I believe in that report, we look, we look back, and then we also continue the projections forward. That's what we're looking at. That's the report that we look at, the space allocation, we look at classroom usage, and make sure that from a projection standpoint that we're covered.
Oh, good. Because I'd like to see this Table 1 in a, I guess, a projection of 10 years back, so that you can see where the trend is. You know, you talked about 13 years ago, and I wasn't in town, and we're not an Aiken family, but I believe Aiken was closed for many years, right? And then we reopened it in the last 20 or something like that?
That I don't know. I'm not familiar.
At some point, it was, yeah. And I don't know, I just, I thought. So, for everyone's edification, it once was closed. They had to reopen it because kids came into town and things like that. So, but yeah, it's, I'd like, I'd be interested in that, just to see where those numbers are. Because I know, historically, I think Morley has always been, it's a walking school. I think there's only two buses there compared to, you know, it's a very neighborhood school, so. But just to look at all the numbers and how they've trended, so, thanks.
And I think that's something that we can make sure that we have a piece of.
Others? So, I have a question in terms of, and it's more around the high school. What hap, and I believe I've asked this question in past board meetings, but what happens at the high school level when kids begin to transfer down? So let's say they start out the beginning of the year with some challenging classes, math or science, and they may have been at a higher level, and they're struggling, and so now they've got to drop down a level. And what happens if there's a number of kids that are doing that, and now they end up in a class that started out low, and now the numbers are beginning?
So I'll try to answer that for you, Carol. One of the things that I can tell you that what the principals generally do, and the principals have, we try to empower them with some license to figure out what their staffing trends are. When we're doing the FTEs, we look by course, and we're looking at numbers for the course requests as they come in, in and around that December-January time when we're doing that. We look at the number of students that are on the ground in October, and then we look at the students at a third reference point, and I can't remember if it's May or March, what month it is exactly. But they have a set of three, so they can see the trend at their school, because those trends differ by school and by course. And they build their average class size and their number of sections that they're dedicating with that trend in mind. So the places that are always honestly a little bit of the stickiest are when we're doing new courses and trying to know, all right, well, we know we have this many requests for it right now in January and February when we're setting our FTE number. Will we have that number of students on the ground in October? And once all of that data scheduling happens, will we have a sufficient room, if that course is popular, say, to make sure that we can enable as many students to take it as possible? So usually, the first two years that a course is offered, we're, you know, we're trying to identify that data trend. But for everything else, they're looking at a four-year trend of enrollments when they're making those FTE decisions.
Anyone else?
So, I guess kind of the report I just asked for, but I think you could forecast it, just looking at this for Charter Oak. So I'm guessing Charter Oak's probably been open four or five years now, because I can't remember. Four, Dave? The four, I know. Four? So that report, if you look at it, kind of indicates, so if you look at, there's four sections per grade, right, and that's what we anticipated. So back, if you would looked at this Charter Oak, and I'm guessing, I don't, my memory's not that good, that we would have probably had two and three sections, at least three sections, four years ago for each class. And that they, opening Charter Oak, were getting the four classes. And now, next year, we'll see 5th grade having four sections, right?
Correct. And Charter Oak's a little, it's apples and oranges, because remember being a magnet school?
Well, that's what I mean, to attract them.
We built Charter Oak to increase the capacity, and so to...
No, exactly. So that's my point.
Yes.
Is that that was built for that practice and that purpose, and that this year, 5th grade isn't fully, not with the four sections. Well, next year, it will be.
Correct.
So when we were looking at this six years ago and building Charter Oak, this was the promise of getting this filled, right?
Correct.
And so that next year, I'm anticipating that you'll have four sections in 5th grade, and then that really has kind of solidified, hopefully, the return on investment that Charter Oak was. That's what I'm getting at, right?
All right. Thank you, Paul and Liz. All right. Next agenda is the Routine Matters Financial Report. Approval of the financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2019. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2019. May I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Ready for the question and discussion?
I'm up again. Good evening. So this is, as our chairperson just indicated, the financial report just as of September 30th. So there's not a lot to say as of September 30th, but the big summary statement is that we believe that we're going to be on track to have a balanced budget this year. So if you just want to turn to page 16, and this is the General Fund Report, some of the larger items you'll see are under 5110 principal and assistant salaries. This is the, that we have a principal and special assignment this year to develop a coding curriculum. Another larger item is 5185 teacher assistance. So we've been having trouble getting some teacher assistance, and we have been having to hire some of these through crack. And so there's a little bit of a higher cost than we had anticipated, but we are hoping to be able to bring this hiring in-house and get some more teacher assistance on our own. Under the other benefit accounts, that $250,000 is reflective of the fact that we don't have to make the contribution to teachers' retirement that we had anticipated when we passed our budget. And under 5345, people transportation, some extra costs mostly associated with special ed students. And we're using some extra space at the Cogswell Building for our 18- to 21-year-olds. So that's the $75,000 there. Moving to the next page, again, as a reminder, the grants above the line are the two-year grants that are in the first year. The ones below the line are in the second year of the grant. And we're not 100% sure yet what all the awards are going to look like, and so that's why we don't have all of the numbers yet. We'll have more information, I believe, for our next report. Moving to the next page, I just wanted to highlight, under the Special Funds Report, that we used to have a line for Continuing Education, and we no longer have this line item in Special Funds, because as a reminder, we moved this program to Leisure Services. So we took that out. And then finally, this is the Nutrition Services Report. And just one item to highlight beyond what we've already learned tonight is you'll see the operating income or loss line, and that is, we're doing better than we were doing last year at this time. But the reason that we're in a deficit is that there are just startup costs when we start the school year, and this will even out over time. So that is the report. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Liz. The next item is Approval of the Minutes. Approval of the Minutes from the October 15, 2019 Regular Board of Education Meeting. Recommendation that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the Regular Board of Education Meeting of October 15. May I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second. Discussion and questions.
I have a question. And so the minutes overall look very good. I just had a question regarding the piece that was summarizing the discussion in terms of the student population, how students are doing, the high needs piece, but more specifically towards the latter part of the paragraph, where it was making reference to the disaggregated data. And I was hoping or encouraging for it also to really highlight even furthermore what more that meant and what more that described. Because what, from what I gathered from the presentation, it highlighted how, in terms of our high needs students, the piece that really stood out, not only in terms of our students in town, but on a state and, on a local state level as well, that there really was evidence that socioeconomic status really was the key defining feature that played a role in terms of impacting the performance. And so just was hoping at least for a few lines to be included in that summary, just again, to specify what the disaggregated data really highlighted in terms of the performance of our young people in town. And just so it's not assumed that it's just because of race that that constitutes, or contributes to the challenges of high needs, but really that when you extract out race and ethnicity, that in terms of financial stability, socioeconomic status, that seems to be the piece to really influence performance. So just, if possible, would like that to, just a few, be reflected, please.
Now, so in terms of the vote, so we vote with the necessary changes to be incorporated. Okay.
Well, just, you know, this is recorded. I can't, I don't disagree with you or anything like that. I just want to make sure that whatever is said is accurate, right, and it's recorded. So I guess we, just to go over it again, to make sure, whatever you're inputting in, you said a lot, and I honestly don't remember, I can't remember what was said. So I agree that we need to make the changes, as recommended, as long as it's clearly indicated in the recordings. So I'm all totally for it.
Just for a point of order, like, I think you want to amend the minutes. Like, I think you need to make a motion, right? Because you're saying you want to amend the minutes, right?
Right. So we have a motion on the floor now, so I would say that you would need to amend the current motion to reflect the necessary changes that you just stated. And then I think we can vote on that. Correct? Andy?
So is that what I firmly said?
Yes.
I recommend that we amend the minutes as stated to reflect the suggestions that were made.
In accordance with the recording.
So that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that piece?
I do have a question. So, Lorna, is that something you would be comfortable writing for Kami? Because Kami wasn't here at the time, so I think it's kind of incumbent upon us to provide the suggested revision.
I don't, I don't mind doing that, but I also want to, if we need to discuss it again, too, it's not just for my piece of knowledge. I mean, I think it's important for all of us to be aware of why this amended piece is important. So, not that I want us to go over the whole presentation again, but again, just the salient pieces, I think it would behoove all of us to be mindful of that. So I certainly don't mind being of assistance and giving a suggested piece to amend, and we all have the minutes, so we certainly can reflect that as well. But I think that's information for all of us to be aware of.
Dave, the reason I said that is because we have the recordings, and I'm happy that Lorna could articulate that in writing. But it was just, I would be more work for you to have to listen to it again, but that's, you know, I know, I hate to, however it's done, and it's done right, I fully support it, whatever has to be done.
Thank you, Paul. Paul volunteered. Okay, so we're ready for the vote. All in favor?
What are we voting on right now? The amendments?
Amendment, amended motion.
Is that clear to everybody that we're voting on the amended motion that Lorna just stated?
Yes.
I see some heads shaking out in the audience. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay. Next item is Information and Reports. Board Members Communication Reports. Reports from Other Boards and Organizations.
So I'm making an announcement on behalf of my wife, who, she's the faculty advisor at Hall for the Unified Business Club. And they are currently working on developing a cookbook that they'll be selling. And therefore, they're looking to us as board members, it's voluntary, but would love to see a high participation rate, to just submit a recipe with a short blurb about it, kind of like you would read a cookbook, right? I think she's going to be emailing us tomorrow specifics. But if you guys would participate, it'd be great, would help them. Also, I mention this out loud because anybody out in the audience, staff, Paul, anyone, that's interested in participating in this, you know, just let me know, or maybe let her know. And it would be greatly appreciated. It's a great club, if you're not familiar with it, and they work really hard to do these different activities and, you know, get things done. So just wanted to give a heads up that, you know, you will be getting that information, and if you want to participate, that would be great. Thank you.
I had no idea Rob was going to say that, but most of us at this table have been a celebrity chef. And I know, Carol, you have a great recipe out there, and not that anyone else does it, but Carol shared it with me one day, and it was fantastic. So I would encourage our board members to at least represent one of our chef, celebrity chef. So it's a challenge to you guys, so. So it's a challenge to you guys, so, I guess, right? I didn't even know you were doing that, so good.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you to your wife for even raising that. I think that's a wonderful idea. And funny enough, Mark, I have mine written down, so I will be sending that to her.
To clarify, though, how many peppers do you use? She gave me an entire bag of what the giantest, the smallest pepper did, and I was going to use the whole thing, so make sure you're clear on that.
Hey, other information in this, oh, you have one?
We got a backup. It's Dave. I've only got a little time left here. I had the pleasures I mentioned. I got to attend the PT Council, Parent Teacher Council, on behalf of the Board of Ed. And at that meeting, Tom Moore was there, and Eric Dancy presented the Raptor system. And we had some good questions from the representatives from the different schools. So that was neat. I also got to attend the College Night at Conner, Kenya. I forgot to check to see if you're going to talk about that. I won't step on it too much. It was just great, though. And then Amanda and I had the chance to visit Akin and spend some time with the second graders, who raised money to find a cure for cancer. I think it was some $2,100 in the end there. Got to do some yoga, that I, that was my first time, to be honest. It was good, and those second graders can stretch a little more than this guy. But it was really neat. Amanda, thank you for doing that. And Akin, congratulations to all the second graders and all the kids who pitched in for that special fundraiser.
All right, thank you, Dave.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about yesterday in the election, the, some of the things. So what I typically do during that election season is that I go from spot to spot, and I just do that for a lot of reasons, and I did. And, you know, we could all remember, some of us could remember when we found issues at KP with the handicap parking. It was solved, it's much better, the access to that. So some of the things that we brought up at this table were implemented and things. I had talked to Mayor Sherry Kanter yesterday, because it happened to be at, Carol, where you and I talked, and we talked about it in depth, at the Elmwood Community Center, where there's not a lot of handicap spots up front because some of the workers that were working there, and I know you stood there and watched that for a while. I saw that at KP as well, that the workers were taking up the closest handicap spots to that all day, and just things like that, that I think, not necessarily in our purview, but because we're elected and we're at these spots, that this continuous improvement model, like they don't get fixed unless you talk about it, you know, the Elmwood Community Center, the KP, and I want to commend the administration for their busing from the Yukon property. You really, you really couldn't tell that anything was going on. And I guess I've never been at Conner at night, but they got the light generator going, and I was like, you know, it was fantastic. So the support and all that was, was great, and I just think there's some, you know, I know that you and I, Carol, talked, and I talked to the mayor about some of these issues, but I just don't want to make sure that, you know, you talk about it, but that it gets done, because I thought it went very smoothly yesterday. The school systems were up and running and fully, you know, the registrars did a great job and things like that, so, and the busing from, you know, I drove by there and I couldn't believe how many cars were there. So it was great. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or anything like that.
I can echo your comments, Mark, because yesterday really verified or solidified the decision that we made at the last board meeting in terms of those special elections that are going to be coming up in the future, because it was crowded at many of the polling stations, and those handicap parking spaces were already occupied, and you saw more elderly residents coming up, and they had to park further away. And so you can see where they had to take a little longer just to get to the entrance, and then you would see where maybe the spouse would have to drop off the other one that had gone into the building and then circle back around. So I think that is something that we need to look at a little more carefully and perhaps collaborate with others in town to see if we can address that. So if folks are going to be there all day, maybe they can park further away from the building, or we can perhaps look at a drop-off so that it's continuously moving, but somehow make it so that the elderly folks who are coming to vote are able to at least come into those handicap spots and then leave, since they're going to be coming in, voting, and then leaving in a short period of time. But I do agree with you, because I stood at a few places and I really noticed that, and it was a struggle for some of them. So I think we just need to be mindful.
I would encourage you then to share that with the registrar voters. They have complete control over that. We don't hire their workers, that's their workers, and so it's their, it's their flow on that. But I know that Bob Palmer works with them to make sure that schools are ready for their, for their day.
Duly noted. I'll send an email.
Carol, if you'll do that, then I'll consider it a done issue, and I know I talked to Sherry yesterday about it, but if you, that'd be great if you do. Thank you.
All right, so we're moving to other information and discussions. I'm going to say we just had that. So the non-staff communication and reports, which is reports from our student board representatives.
Good evening, long time no see. Today marks the end of the first quarter, and I speak for most, if not all, of the students when I say it's a little less weight on our shoulders now that we have a fresh start with second quarter, especially for the seniors who have been working very hard on submitting their applications for the early action and early decision deadlines, which was November 1st. After our last meeting in October, both school-wide and future educators' college fairs had great attendance. Families were able to meet and speak to college admissions officers and gather any additional information that enables them and their child to make the best post-secondary decision. Trick or Treat Street was held on October 25th, where many of our own Conner families visited Conner classrooms for a special treat while also raising money for the West Hartford Food Pantry. On that same Friday was Conner's Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness, and personally, it was really great to see how unanimous and spirited our school is when it comes to causes like that. If you would just walk down the hallway, all the staff members were wearing their Pink Out shirts, all the students were wearing the color pink or our Pink Out shirts. So I just think our staff members are really setting a great example for us. The Fall Concert took place October 29th, and props to the students who are so dedicated for their musical talent. I think, you know, it's really normal for us to attend like a school concert, because our students are doing instruments since they're in elementary school, but it takes like a lot of practice, so I think that went really well. Halloween was last Thursday, and it was very exciting as well to see the spirit from not only students, but Mr. Duarte and staff members, any superhero you can name, we had it, and my favorite was Mr. Incredible, so. Happening right now in the Conner cafeteria is the volunteer fair for students. Thirteen different organizations are there, such as Relay for Life, Habitat for Humanity, and many more, which are open to informing students on the importance of community service and how they can get involved. I'm really looking forward for tomorrow, where students from our human rights course will be accompanying the Charter Oak 5th graders on the United Nations trip to New York. So we leave at 6:30 in the morning, we get back around 5:30. Tomorrow as well, at 7:00 in the, in room 169, parents will have the opportunities to speak to a panel presented by the Conner PTO focused on helping parents navigate through college application process. Next Wednesday at 2:00 is the kickoff for the Black Box 10-Minute Play Festival, which can also be seen Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM. Fall sports are, I can say sadly, because I'm a senior, sadly coming to an end with senior nights and playoffs happening soon. And special congratulations to Conner's Boys Cross Country team, who took home the Class Double L State Championship plaque. Last year it was Hall, this year it was Conner, so West Hartford run is in full force. Homecoming tickets are now on sale, and it's the same day as the Hall-Conner game, which is November 23rd. And just a previous comment on Professional Development Day from yesterday. I was there, and there were some people, you know, "You went to school on your day off?" Yeah, it was awesome. I wish you did, too. Just like, thank you so much to Dr. Haskins and the council who put that together, just like the keynote speaker, Iron Nizario, said, his 16-year-old self feels better knowing that there's a change system out there that's willing to put forth the efforts to be involved in students' lives further than just academics, and I think that's really important. So West Hartford's ahead of the game. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The Hall Muslim Student Association concluded their month-long food drive and donated their food to the West Hartford Food Pantry earlier this week. The Black Box show, Makinal, was a success, and auditions for our first student-directed production of the year, Clue, are today and tomorrow. Also, our improv group, The Answer, had their first show last Friday, and I heard that it was really funny. Last Wednesday, students in their second year of acting classes took on the role of various historical figures for the whole day. So you had people like Whitney Houston walking around the hallways, so that was pretty cool. And select performances can be found on the Hall High Theater Instagram page. The Coral Department's annual Madrigals show will be November 22nd and 23rd. Tickets are on sale now at tix.com under Hall High Madrigals. The Choir Mid-Fest event this past Monday at Hall went really well. 8th grade students from KP and Bristow came for, came for a day of singing with high school students, and they had the opportunity to talk about their upcoming transition to high school. And then they returned for a brief concert that evening. Next Monday on Veterans Day, the Hall Orchestra and Concert Choir will have an in-school concert honoring veterans and their service to our country. This Saturday will be our homecoming dance. Leading up to it this week, we've had a great spirit week. Tomorrow is Meme an Icon Day, so we're in for some laughs. Our first pep rally of the year was on Halloween, and everyone had the opportunity to show off their creative costumes. In terms of sports, the Girl's, the Hall Girls Cross Country won the Class Double L Championship and the State Open. Also, the Girls Cross Country, girls swim and dive, and boys soccer each won their respective league championships. And boys and girls soccer and field hockey will be attending their state tournaments as of this afternoon. We are very proud of everyone representing, representing our community. Also, the National Conference for Community and Justice will be coming on November 17th and 18th to do a two-day workshop with some students covering various social justice issues, including racism and classism. And there is a pet supplies drive by the Hall Animal Welfare Awareness Club during the month of November. Donations will be given to Paw Safe Animal Rescue. Some seniors will be taking a well-deserved rest after submitting college applications last Friday. As we wrap up this quarter, we are excited for what's in store coming next. Thank you.
You both, Izzy and Kenya. For future business announce...
And because you're separate schools, but I think it's to note, you both talked about the accomplishments across country. I don't know if everyone knows this, but the Hall Cross Country is Betty Remigemo-Napp, and the Hall's cross-country coach is Ron Knapp, and they're husband and wife. And this, I don't know if there's, they did a small article on it, and, but this is a husband and wife that just won the Class Double L State Championships for both the Boys and Girls Cross Country in West Hartford. And I think, I think almost that's like national news, because who in what town could brag about that? And so kudos to those two, those husband and wife duo that are taking care of our kids at both high schools.
Thank you for that, Mark. Okay. Moving right along to future business, which is the announcement of future meeting dates. Tuesday, November 19th, Town Hall, right here in the Legislative Chamber, which is room 314 at 7:00 PM. Number 2, Tuesday, December 3rd, right here in Town Hall and the Legislative Chamber at 7:00 PM. And then the final meeting for December of 2019 is Tuesday, December 17, 2019, here in Town Hall, 50 South Main Legislative Chamber at 7:00 PM. Do we have a request for any future agenda items? No, not at this time. Do we have any comments from any visitors? Okay, we do not have executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.